If you came for the city council meeting of September 19th, 2016, you're in the right place. We'll start with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom, Drew, Solomon, Doyle, Estes, Scott, Laurenti, Wright, Modrick, Roberts. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now we'll have the invocation by Pastor Brett Hildeman, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, thank you for the opportunity that you've given all of us to serve our community. I pray for a great grace and guidance as you not only lead this council, but Lord, as you lead us in our own individual lives. Help us, Father, be honoring to you in the way that we live. Father, I pray that you would let this night actually be joyful and fun and an enjoying time of service. Help us always remember that we serve you first, we serve each other second. Let us serve to the very best of our abilities in the areas that you've given us. I thank you, Lord, for each of these members who have served and are serving in so many different capacities. Guide, would you lift them up, strengthen them, and give them great wisdom, grace, and power? In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now we'll go on to the adoption of the agenda. If anyone has any additions to the agenda, now would be the time, or in absence of that, a motion to adopt. We have a motion to approve, and a second, and all in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And now we'll have a brief break for some awards and recognitions down front.
Thank you, sir.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the September 2016 Veteran of the Month recognition to Neil Harris, a proud Ward Five member.
Thank you, yes indeed, and a neighbor to both.
Neil Edward Harris is a distinguished, has a distinguished military and service career dating back to his enlistment in the U.S. Army in March 1966. His stints included Fort Knox, Fort Benning, and West Germany. He transferred to inactive ready reserves for a few years, and then served 11 years with Headquarters and Headquarters Battery with 147th Field Artillery Group in Pierre, serving as Battery Supply Sergeant and Food Service Supervisor. In 1983, Harris began a full-time technician career with the South Dakota Army National Guard. After spending a couple of years with the 740th Transportation Company in Aberdeen, Harris came to Rapid City, serving 21 years in numerous capacities at the South Dakota Army National Guard Headquarters at Camp Rapid. His duties included computer operator, administrative non-commissioned officer, enlisted records manager, incentive manager, acting state education officer, and over 10 years as senior military personnel specialist. He served as the unit first sergeant and acting state command sergeant major, retiring in 2006 as master sergeant. His total military service time was 40 years, 4 months, and 9 days.
Yes, sir.
Good Lord. That's a long time. Harris has, congratulations.
Thank you.
Took me off guard. I was expecting to say 25 years, 20, you know. I was just a boy. Harris has continued to stay busy since retiring from the National Guard in 2006. He is a life member of the Enlisted Association of the United States, the South Dakota National Guard Enlisted Association, the Retired Enlisted Association, TRIA, VFW, Benevolent Protective Order of ELKS, and is a member of the American Legion and American Legion Riders. He serves as National Veteran Service Committee Chairman for the Rapid City ELKS Lodge, and Vice President and National Veteran Service Committee Chairman for the South Dakota State ELKS Association. He is past Chairman and Secretary for the South Dakota Veterans Cemeteries Support Council. He served as Chairman during the fundraising and installation of the Avenue of Flags at Black Hills National Cemetery. Today, as ELKS National Veteran Service Chairman, he remains active with numerous activities, programs, and projects at Fort Meade and Hot Springs VA Medical Centers. Harris medals and awards from his military service accurately reflect his distinguished career. They include, but are not limited to, Meritorious Service Medal, four awards, Army Commendation Medal, four awards, Army Reserve Components Achievement Medal, 10 awards, Army Forces Reserve Medal, three awards, South Dakota National Guard Service Medal, six awards, Humanitarian Service Medal, South Dakota Distinguished Service Award, South Dakota Emergency Operations Ribbon, South Dakota Recruiting Medal, South Dakota Desert Storm Ribbon, South Dakota Unit Citation Award, as well as Medal of Good Conduct. Mr. Harris has been serving in our country since 1966 with dedication and sacrifice, making him an excellent Veteran of the Month. His example of service makes him deserving of this honor, and we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you.
I have a certificate for you, and some free grub.
Oh my goodness, that's awesome.
And a coffee cup here.
Okay. Very good.
So we'll take, we'll go over here and take, well, wait.
Wait.
Speech. Your friends want to hear you say something.
Well, Mayor, I want to thank you and the council and the citizens of Rapid City, and the writers and veterans organizations that put me in for this award. It is truly an honor. It's been a privilege to serve, and we'll continue to do that, okay? Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And now we are about to say goodbye to a 25-year city employee, Lieutenant Pete Ragno, with the Rapid City Police Department, is retiring soon. And to speak about that, we have Police Chief Carl Jiggers.
Well, thank you. I just want to take a couple of minutes here to recognize Lieutenant Ragno for two things. First off, for 25 years of service to the city of Rapid City, the Rapid City Police Department, and then, like the mayor said, a week from Friday, he will be retiring from the Rapid City Police Department after 25 full years. So it's always one of those things that causes mixed emotions, and on the one hand, you know, we don't see very many long-term employees that complete that number of years of service. But at the, on the other hand, we look forward to him being able to relax and fish as frequently as he wants to in the future. So during that 25 years of service, he served as a patrol officer for about seven years, and then as a detective, as our community resource officer, working up in our crime prevention office. And he was a training administrator for about four years, which required him to recruit, hire, and oversee the training of all of our new officers during that timeframe. And he served as a patrol sergeant, as a sergeant in our Criminal Investigations Division, and several years as a patrol lieutenant, and for the past few years, he has served as our accreditation manager. And just earlier this summer, we were reaccredited, and we received the designation of reaccreditation with excellence through Kalia. So that was under his leadership with a team of other employees and officers, and we just want to thank him very much for his service to our community.
Thank you, too.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief Jiggers, and Mayor Allender. It's been an honor to serve with both of these fine men for over 20 years of my career. I just want to thank the good people of this community for their support, not only for myself, but the entire police department, and I do believe we have a bright future. Thank you.
Doreen, do you want to come up for the picture? Okay. I should recognize his wife, also a former employee of the Rapid City Police Department, who has been to his side to help him in this career.
So we're here tonight to recognize this bright young lady here to our right. This is Chief Tammy Stottle. She is, works in our Fire and Life Safety Division, and her position is Deputy Fire Marshal for the city. A little bit about Tammy and why we're here tonight. Tammy is a Rapid City native, which we're always proud to announce when we have employees that choose to stay in our community and give back. She's a Stevens High School graduate. And a little more about Tammy, she's been with, outside of her career, she's also been involved with Pennington County Search and Rescue since 2003 as a volunteer, and most recently, serving as their team leader. So when she's not working, she's in charge of that volunteer organization in her spare time. She started her career in 2011 as a firefighter medic, and just to give you a little bit of background, in the U.S. Fire Service today, there's about 1.1 million firefighters that work for fire departments across the country. Of that 1.1 million employees, only 7% are females, and that's something that we continue to work on across the country as an initiative to increase diversity, and certainly here in Rapid City. And we were really pleased to bring Tammy to the ranks of the Fire Department here a number of years ago. She was promoted to Chief Deputy Fire Marshal, like I said, earlier this year, and even that, that she's a chief officer, and that her insignia is in gold, she's a chief officer with the department. I just think if only 7% of females are in the fire service in total, imagine how few that number is that are actually chief officers. And again, she's certainly deserving of that title. Also in her part-time, she's a Planning Section Chief with Rapid City Pennington County Type III Incident Management Team. So the larger incidents or disasters that happen to community, we assemble a team of experts, and Tammy's on that team. Regionally and even nationally, she's also a Resource Unit Leader on a Rocky Mountain Type II Incident Management Team, spends a lot of her time in the summer traveling around the country on some of the larger wildfires. She, more locally here, she also holds a bachelor's degree from the School of Mines in Mechanical Engineering, and then also went on to earn her master's degree from the University of Maryland in Fire Protection Engineering, which puts her kind of at the tip of the sword in terms of education and qualifications in the fire service. She's currently working towards her license as a Fire Protection Engineer, which then would be another way that we could utilize her talents in the Fire Department in the city. So the reason we're here tonight is to recognize her latest accomplishment, and that's her graduation from the National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Officer Program, or we call it the EFO Program. To even be accepted to attend that program, it's a four-year program, she had to be sponsored by the city, the state of South Dakota, our elected officials, as well as the Department of Homeland Security, to even attend the National Fire Academy's EFO Program. Just to qualify or even to apply, you have to hold the minimum of a bachelor's degree to be accepted, and also be currently serving in a leadership position or a position of influence, either in your community or in your organization, of which she does both. The EFO Program, in its history, it's been around for 28 years in the fire service. It's a federally funded and sponsored program. Of that, about, there's about a 50% washout rate, so about half of the people that are enrolled or accepted end up dropping out just because of the rigors of the studies that you have to complete. In its 28 years of history, there's only been 3,700 graduates in the entire United States. In history, in the history of South Dakota, there's only been 13 that have completed the program, and of those 13, only five in the history of the Rapid City Fire Department, going back to 1948, when it became a career department. So with that, we're extremely proud of Tammy and very honored to have her a part of our organization. She obviously contributes a great deal to our successes in the community in planning and reviewing new construction and all the building that's going on in Rapid City. That's a part of her responsibility. So on behalf of the city of Rapid City and the Rapid City Fire Department, I'd like to formally recognize Chief Stottle on becoming an executive fire officer.
You can't not leave outing those things, though, when you talk about Tammy. Her accomplishments are quite extensive.
I'd just like to thank the chief. It does take a lot of time to get through this, and fortunately, I had a job where I was able to do a lot of my work, or where they gave me time on duty to do a lot of that. Also, my family and the guys I work with, those guys all helped contribute, even if they don't think they did. So, thank you.
That was her. It's all her.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we get to see what three-fourths of the audience was here for. Okay, this will take us on to General Public Comment, which is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by a unanimous vote of council members present. We have a few speaker request forms here. We'll start off with Linda Raby. And I should mention that everyone in General Public Comment has three minutes.
Oh, I thought, it sounded like you were going to go on.
Period.
Period. Okay. I'm Linda Raby with the chamber, and I hadn't planned on saying anything until I noticed on the agenda that we were honoring Lieutenant Peter Ragno, class of '07 of Leadership Rapid City, and Deputy Fire Marshal Tammy Stottle, class of '11 of Leadership Rapid City. We're in the process of doing Leadership Rapid City, and so I'd just like to stress that Leadership Rapid City graduates are doing big things, and so congratulations to them. And also, I wanted to invite the council, I know the mayor's coming, to our annual meeting, 130th Annual Meeting, and we'll be honoring some pretty important people. Jim Skoll is getting the George Award. The George Award is set up for somebody who doesn't sit back and let George do it. It's somebody that takes the initiative and gets things done, and I think all of us would agree that Jim Skoll definitely gets things done. And the YPG is Kyle Lambert. He's a young man to be watching. He is an amazing young professional, and he's getting involved in the community, and so watch for good things from him. And also, the hometown hero is the Rushmore Soccer. And they have done amazing things. If you've not been out to see the soccer complex, it's great. Thank you, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. And now Gina Parkhurst. Or is it Jenna?
It's Gina, you got it right.
Okay.
Good job, thank you. My name is Gina Parkhurst, and I live in Ward Three, and I'm the current leader of the Black Hills Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution. And as you probably know, this week is Constitution Week, which is the commemoration of America's most important document. Constitution Week is celebrated annually during the week of September 17th through 23rd. The tradition of celebrating the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution. In 1955, DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. The aims of the celebration are to, one, emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution; two, inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for the way of our life, for our way of life, rather; three, encourage the study of the historical events which led to the forming, the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. Constitution Week is a great time to learn more about this important document and celebrate the freedoms it gave us. I'd like to thank Mayor Allender for signing a proclamation that our historian Betty Herakovic sent about Constitution Week. And thank you, for the rest of you, for your service to our community. And if you'd like additional information, you can go online to www.dar.org, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now Bob Wirick, brief update from the Civic Center Task Force.
Well, either you get the slow version of me, or the very speedy version, so tonight, I hope it's the speedy version. Since we were, I'm Bob Wirick, the Chairman of the Task Force Subcommittee on Public Information. Since we've been in front of you the last time, we have conducted listening sessions out in the public. Out of that came the frequently asked questions sheet that I'll distribute here in just a moment. This is the basis of information that we got from the questions that were posed during the, during the public information forums, and so we wanted to kind of put that out there. It's taken us a little while to kind of hammer out just the right answers for those. We look at continuing to work in the community, to basically address the concerns of the community through service clubs. We expect to be out doing public appearances with the different service clubs in the, in the community, and so if anybody has any requests, please direct them to the task force. You can email us directly at civiccentertaskforce dot, or pardon me, at gmail dot com, civiccentertaskforce, all one word, at gmail dot com. You can also follow our progress on Facebook. We've been getting posts out there with the RC Civic Center Resolution Task Force, and also updates and additional information at www.rc.gov.org or gotmine.com as well, too. Certainly, and as we go forward, the task force will be looking at things that include the vision, since we are spending vision funds, we are going to be looking at the vision of what the, at the Barnett Arena provides for the community, and certainly the things that we haven't really looked at very succinctly has been the marketability of the Barnett Arena. So with that, I'll conclude.
Thank you. And, now we are on to non-public hearing items, items four through 44. There are no speaker request forms, so there won't be a public comment period on these items. We'll go to consent items, items four through 36. If the council would like to pull any of the items off consent for independent discussion, now would be the time. Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take off item 25, 27, and 31.
Okay, are there any others? Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve. Motion and a second to- Motion and a second to approve the consent items four through 36 with the exception of 25, 27, and 31. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Go to item 25, which is to acknowledge the invitation to the RCPD Community Advisory Committee's first public forum. We'll go to Darla Drew.
I'll move to approve, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Okay.
Chief Jagoras, could I ask you a few questions on this?
Of course.
I mainly want to just make this time available to you to let the public be aware of the work you're doing along these lines and just get that invitation out there again.
Okay. Thank you very much, Alderman Drew. Next Tuesday, September 27th, at 7:00 PM here at the City Council Chambers, the Community Advisory Committee, which was established within the last year, will have its first progress report to the community. And so, our intention is to have it in this room so that we can invite council members that are available to attend the general public, and we intend to use the technology in this room so that it can be available live the night of the meeting. During that meeting, we are planning to share many details of exciting progress that we've made as a department and as a committee regarding improving race relations in Rapid City. Following Monday, October 3rd, we intend to replicate that same meeting a second time at 7 o'clock at Lakota Homes at the Oati Center, which is at 2430 Genukanuska Drive. So, two opportunities for the public to come and learn more about what we've been doing.
And since you've had about a year to work with Mr. Vargas, how has that been working for you to have that kind of liaison type of person and capacity?
It has been exceptional. Mr. Vargas has a shared vision regarding my intentions to lessen any divide that exists within our community, and he is a bright individual that is taking a very logical approach to doing so, and I think when we have this fall progress report, we'll see many examples of the success of that.
Thank you very much. That's the end of my questions.
You're welcome.
The motion is to acknowledge item number 25. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now on to item 27, which is Resolution Number 2016 dash 067A, a resolution fixing time and place for hearing on assessment role for cleanup of miscellaneous property. We'll go to Darla Drew again.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve.
Second.
And my question is for Jeff Barbier. On the, no, he, there he is. Sorry, Jeff. When you fix these times and places, you make it very clear to the public that everyone can attend this. I have people that are very concerned about some of the miscellaneous cleanups in their area, and is this someplace they would go to express their concerns? Or do they just go to your office? You know, what do we do?
Certainly, I would be comfortable with him contacting me. That would probably be the most efficient way to handle it, I would imagine.
Okay, because I have a particular interest in this from my ward, so I will have her get in touch with you. Thank you.
Okay, that'd be fine.
That's the end of my questions.
Okay, now we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I direct a question to Pauline? Pauline, per discussion on the last legal and finance committee meeting, did you find out the issue I had with the Ninth Street property where it was being billed to two separate addresses?
I apologize for that. That one is not on here on tonight's roll. That was when we were setting a hearing, but no, I have not, but I will before we go to the hearing on that one.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Jeff Barbier, please.
Yes.
Jeff, I'm looking for the date. What was the date that we're fixing this time for, setting it up for? Is it tonight?
No.
I didn't think so, but...
I...
Yeah, Pauline, can I answer that? But I couldn't.
Okay. And, and, go ahead. Wait for the answer.
Thank you. I switched the two around. This one is just setting the hearing date on these properties. The Ninth Street properties is on this, and I'll get with Jeff tomorrow to find out why this, the same, you said the same properties for two different things, or is it two properties for the same assessment?
It's the same property being billed to two separate people on the same property.
Okay, so...
My guess is possibly a divorce or something, or brother-sister or something, but same property.
We'll look at that tomorrow before it comes to hearing. The hearing is on October 17th, according to the notice that was sent out. And with these, these notices go to the landowners, just to kind of go back off of Alderman Darla, Darla Drew's question. They do get notification, sorry, it's a Monday. They do get notification of a public hearing. I know, I received phone calls from people before questioning this, you know, and I try to get them to call code enforcement because they're the ones that actually went and observed everything. I'm just the one that actually builds it and my signature on the letter, but they are notified that it is a public hearing that they can come to on the 17th of October.
Mayor, would you follow up on that? Yes. Thank you for the clarification on that. Mr. Barbier, have you got an answer, maybe not an answer tonight, but I'm looking for at these properties, and how many are these vacant currently?
We have compiled a list of vacant properties because of some of the other things that obviously we've been doing. Those vacant properties do become a big headache because we end up basically, you know, we basically become the property manager to make sure things get mowed and cleaned up and whatnot. So, we have compiled a list, and we can certainly cross-check it to this list if you'd like us to.
And then, these folks on this list also have the opportunity to come into compliance between now and the hearing date. Am I understanding that correctly?
No. At this point, they've already, these properties have already been abated, so there's already a, you know, work, a bill, so to speak, attached to it. They do have notice, though, for example, to mow your lawn, it's five days, to come into compliance before we re-inspect, and we would do the abatement after the notice has expired. Also, if people will just contact us and say, hey, I can't quite get it done in that amount of time, can I get a little extra time? We're real good about working with people as long as, as long as they get ahold of us and let us know.
I know you are. I've seen it happen in a couple of times, not every instance, but seen it happen in a couple of times, and then I just wanted to be assured that the process hasn't changed because I see we're going through an ordinance change process as well, so thank you for the clarification. So, I look forward to getting a further update on October 19th. Thank you. 17th, excuse me.
Okay, the motion is for approval of item 27. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to item number 31, which is to approve the transit feasibility study, request for proposal. We'll go back to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Dale Tech. Hi, Dale, just give me some clarity on this. We're just looking for somebody to do the feasibility study. Do we reach out to any areas along with that, or is that up to the group that we hire?
Correct. We are just hiring a consultant, and they, as part of the stakeholder requirement in the metropolitan planning area, which is Box Elder, Somerset, Meade County, Pennington County, City of Rapid City, they will assemble a group of people, have focus groups, and then have public input meetings as well to be able to gather input from all the stakeholders and other focus groups that have been identified by the stakeholders.
Okay, because I've had people approach me on some of the areas, they'd like to see the transportation go, like whether it's the new NAU, or, it's not new, but the NAU building and the WTI, and, you know, other various locations outside the city limits, and I just wondered if, do I have to talk to them about that, or they will just go ahead and try and find those?
As part of their study requirement, they will be reaching out to large organizations, NAU, WDTI, certain places out at Ellsworth Air Force Base and Box Elder will have many large centers of activity that will be considered for the routes and for feedback from the people that either work there or are employed there.
Well, I think it's great, and I hope that the free service for students extends to these areas as well, and I yield.
Okay, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up with Dale Tech, if I may.
Yes.
Dale, I was just looking at the schedule. It appears to be pretty aggressive. Is it, do you feel a comfort level on the feasibility study portion of it?
I do, since it's just a study. There's gonna be a lot more work after the feasibility is done. If there is a decision made to go through with expanding transit service, there'll be much more discussion about how it's funded by all the entities that are involved, so this is kind of the first step in the process of actually getting additional transit services as a study, just to look at it.
Thank you. And, Mayor, I've also had contact from a couple of different agencies within the City of Rapid City that are interested in this study to proceed, and they fully support it. Their only concern is, and I believe Dale's already addressed this question, is that they want to make sure that they're on the invite list, or they have the opportunity to make a presentation as well, so there's generating some interest or buzz within the community.
Okay.
Looks good. Thank you.
The motion is to approve item 31. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This will take us on to non-consent items, 37 through 44. There are no speaker request items, so let me know, public hearing. We'll go straight to item number 37. Under ordinance, we'll go to our legal finance chair, John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Second reading ordinance number 6137 regarding supplemental appropriation number three for 2016, and I recommend approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 38, first reading ordinance number 6138, an ordinance amending the code enforcement appeal procedure by repealing chapter 8.01 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, adopting section 2.24.065 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and amending sections 2.24.020 and 8.16.050, 10.56.060, and 10.56.065 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I recommend approval.
Okay, a motion and a second for approval. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Another question for Jeff Barbier, if he's in the area again. Stepped away again. Maybe the city attorney's office can assist me here on making sure I understand correctly on the appeal process. The citizens have 10 days to make their appeal to the director, or in this case, it'd be the Human Community Resources Office, and then the director has 10 days to respond to that, to make a written response to the person that's making the complaint, or has the complaint filed against them. And then, can you share with us the next step after that that goes to us up here on the council within so many days?
We'll go to Joel Landy, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't write the ordinance. I guess I'm not intimately familiar with the timelines, but yes, I believe it ultimately ends up at the council.
If I'm understanding right, it's just making sure that people understand that they have 10 days to respond to this, and then that they, that they're aware that they have a very short window of opportunity to get their appeal in.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, the reason we're making the changes is because nobody ever appealed to the code enforcement board of appeals, and they had a similar timeline. Frankly, most people don't pay much attention to it till they get noticed that they're being assessed for the cost, and then they come directly to you anyway over the cost. And so, it just appeared, looking at it, we had a board and it never met, so...
That's unfortunate, and I mean that with, meaning that the citizens weren't aware that they had that opportunity, or chose not to take that opportunity, go through the appeal process, so we just want to make sure that the people understand that they are very, that they must go through the appeal process on this and in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Okay, motion for item 38 is for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 39, second reading ordinance number 6139, an ordinance to clarify requirements for installation of sidewalks by amending chapter 12.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I recommend approval.
Okay, a motion and a second for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 40, second reading ordinance number 6104, an ordinance to amend certain provisions in the Rapid City Plumbing Code by amending chapter 15.24 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I recommend approval.
Okay, a motion and a second for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 41, second reading ordinance number 6105, an ordinance to amend certain provisions in the Rapid City Electrical Code by amending section 15.16.020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I recommend approval.
Okay, a motion and a second for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 42, second reading ordinance number 6106, an ordinance to amend certain provisions regarding contractors' licenses by amending section 15.04.140 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I recommend approval.
Motion and a second for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to Public Works Committee items. We'll go to Alderman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 43 is discussion of future construction improvements of Elm Avenue from its current southern terminus near Fieldview Drive for approximately 800 feet. This was sent to council without recommendation, as it was the first time that the committee members of Public Works were hearing it. I think you and Dale Tech both laid out the case for what's needed and how decisions in the past have led us to where we are with this. I have been working with the developer here to get it to this point as far as what some of the potential options may be, so I would be happy to entertain any questions on this, but this time, I'll yield the floor for discussion.
Any discussion on item 43 from the council? We'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, I'm not sure who can answer this question best, whether it be Dale Tech or Alderman Doyle. I read in, I missed the Public Works meeting, so I had to stream it, but I read that one of the options laid out by the applicant was, was allow a TIF to be done to finance the improvements, and I was just curious if that was some, if TIF were, TIF was granted, was the LLC willing to borrow the money and take the risk on that? Or were they looking for the city to sponsor the TIF?
I don't know that I can answer that. I don't believe that they had indicated that they would upfront the money for the entire project and undertake the TIF themselves. I think it was more of, the city could do a TIF to cover the whole project. Charity Woman Doyle might correct me if I'm wrong on that, if that's your understanding of what the developer had wanted as well.
Right. The applicant didn't bring these options forward. They just brought the problem to the table, and we looked at what some of the potential options may be. That's what the letters from Dale Tech and the mayor were about. I can't speak for them. I don't know, I think if this were the option that were to gain some traction, that'd be a conversation we would definitely need to have with them, but at this point, they have not indicated that they'd be willing to do that.
Yeah, I may have read that, read that wrong a little bit, so, so the options would be, I guess, publicly, Mr. Tech, what are, what are the financing options in your view?
I'd outline four financing options in the letter that was attached. The first one would be an assessed project. With the assessment, it's the adjoining property owners. There was a warp that was created on a parcel of property and then subsequently subdivided into two. into 22 residential lots. So there would be 22 residents that would be assessed, a portion of that road project. They don't have direct access to the street. They don't have any direct benefit of the street, so that's kind of a hard pill for them to swallow, an assessed project for something they have no benefit for. The second funding option that I had identified was to do it as part of a city capital improvement project, and go to our five-year capital improvement plan, and kick a project out, and insert this one in to try to get it done. The third option was a TIF, and then the fourth would be to go to the Utility Support Fund, which finances not only street improvements, but utilities. However, funding for it isn't available probably for another five years. So to move this project along in an expeditious manner, to me, the best alternative would be to try to bump a project out of our capital improvement plan and insert this one in it.
Before I yield, do you have an idea, how many lots is the applicant looking at putting there?
They had shown us a preliminary layout of, and I don't recall, I want to say it was 20-plus lots.
Okay. I'll yield for now, Mayor. Thank you. Thanks.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask a question of Dale Tech, please?
Yes.
Dale, could you tell us, would this extension of the street benefit these homeowners?
Not in the least, no.
Okay. And thank you for answering that question. That's something I think as we mull what our options are, I think option one of assessing the property owners should be off the table. I don't think they should be penalized for the warp with the developer from years ago that, for a street that they're never really going to benefit from. So I just wanted to make sure I understood that from Dale Tech, and just urge my council members, as we look at our options, I don't think we should penalize these homeowners. So I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. The gist of my question will be for Dale Tech as well, is to, Dale, have you been able to put a dollar amount to each one of these options, or is there a dollar amount that we could use way across the board?
The issue with this project is there are base costs that the developers required to come up with, and then there would be an oversized cost, because Elm Avenue is identified as an arterial road in our major street plan, so that would be a cost of the city. I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I think for this stretch, it was about $1.2 million total cost for the project, of which I want to say about $400,000 was oversizing, so about $800,000 for a base cost, so about, split that in half for what this developer would pay, and then what the outstanding area covered by the warp and another vacant property. So the city share would be about $800,000, just to rough back the napkin cost estimate.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Tech. I'm still trying to put together what is the least painful for the homeowners down in that area, and I'm glad to hear that there is some talk about removing option number one, which is the assessed project. And I'm still formulating a different kind of process to go through, and this number will also help me out. The current atmosphere that I'm working with through the tax increment financing seems to be getting more complicated all the time, so Mayor, I'd like to see maybe a reforming process to the TIF process before we start looking at option three, because that just doesn't seem to appeal to very many homeowners down in that area as well. So there's still the decision-making that has to be done on my part as well, before I come up with a final, which is least painful for these folks down there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask a question of Dale Tech, too?
Of course.
Thank you. Dale, I was just kind of looking at what the scope of this project is. Is this water, sewer, the street extension, you know, water and sewer extensions, and drainage extension, and street, too?
That is correct. It'd be all four legs of the stool, as I like to call it, street, water, sewer, and drainage.
Okay. I was just looking at numbers, and I was, 800 feet for $1.2 million, that's pretty cheap nowadays, a little over $100 a foot. So you said $1.2 million for 800 feet? So, anyway, it doesn't matter until we get to it, but I think that Mr. Councilman Solomon had a very good point of the fact that we shouldn't be assessing people for a road that does them no good whatsoever, just because we let a developer years ago, you know, out of this project. Unfortunately, I think the city's going to end up having to bite the bullet, and we're going to have to find a way to finance this, but it's something that I think should be done, and is the right thing to do. So, thank you very much.
Jerry Wright.
Again to Dale, as I understood, you say that approximately $800,000 is the oversized cost, is that correct?
$400,000 would be an oversize, and then the other $400,000 would be a base cost that would be assessed to residential properties that don't have a benefit to the road.
Okay, so the $400,000 oversize cost, that's funded another way? That's, we better get the money for that, or is that an additional thing we need to come up with?
That is not funded, once again. Other oversizing that we've done with other developers, typically it's a two- or three-year process. They identify that they want to make an improvement, therefore, we can add it to the capital improvement plan as an oversized cost, once the agreement with the developer has been reached.
And the $200,000 is for the 22 lots that are affected by the unusable street, because they're back lots, right?
Yeah, it's in excess of $200,000 that would be assessed to them.
Well, I concur with Jason, Councilman Solomon, on the not assessing the owners, and also, I don't think we should tip it. I think we should look at a way of paying for it, but thank you.
Back to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot an oversight on one of the questions that I was going to ask last Public Works Committee meeting for Dale Tech, if I may.
Yes.
We talked a little bit about my technical term called shoehorning it in with the other CIP projects. You haven't done any projections on what other projects would be moved down the list or drop off the list.
No, we haven't looked at that until we're directed to by the council.
Mayor, if, I know I can't make a motion on that, but that would be my suggestion, is direct staff to come back with a proposal on the CIP projects, to see what projects could be bumped off of the CIP list, or lowered, or whatever the staff comes back for recommendations. That's my encouragement for a motion.
Okay, now we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. There seems to be no deadline on completing this project. I don't see any reason to really shoehorn it into the CIP. I think that it could go to the back of the line, and then just wait to be funded. I know that costs increase the longer we wait, but I don't really want to bump other projects off in lieu of this particular street that doesn't have any kind of urgency attached to it, so, at least not that I know of. So I would go for the CIP option, but I don't want to bump anybody else off, just do this project that doesn't seem to have any deadline. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. The warp that was granted that is causing all the issues was issued and approved by the council in 2005. I'm saying this for a little bit of history, for those that didn't get to stream Public Works. It was shortly after that that the developer wanted to start developing this property. So I want you to just put yourselves in the shoes of a property owner that wants to develop and wants to improve that property for a minute. They got their ducks in a row, came to the city, find out that there's this cloud over this other property that's going to now affect what they can do, because technically, had that not been in place, that developer would have been responsible for half of the road, and the developer in question that initiated this process would be responsible for the other half, the city would be responsible for the oversize. Well, it just kept, oh, excuse, sorry. You threw me off. So anyway, for years and years and years, these people have come to the city saying, you know, how can we make this work, because we can't bear the burden of this entire cost? Not only is it not right and appropriate, financially, it's not feasible. It would be really the inverse of what we would do if an assessment were to be issued, then each of those lots that they want to develop would be increased by $8,000 to $11,000, depending on what the final numbers come out to be, which would then make it unfeasible for them to develop that property. So to say that, you know, there's no urgency here, these people have been trying to develop this property for years, many years, not just a few years, a couple of years, a year. It's been closer to nine or 10 years that they've been trying to get something done, and, you know, it took some time, and it took some nagging, I will admit, to get the right people to the table, to look at what we could do. It is definitely our responsibility to fix this. Not we up here, but we as an institution broke it. We broke it by, you know, pushing, what did Wyffenbach used to say, kicking the can down the road? Well, it's been kicked down, and now there's no road to kick it down, so that's the point. So it's time. I think this is very timely with regard to some of the discussions we've been having on, you know, lesser severe warps with regard to sidewalks, et cetera. But the fact is, is that developers have an expectation, and the city has an obligation, and we've created the problem, and I think we do need to fix it, and I've already talked, but I would make a motion to look at CIP and see what we can do. Even though it's not ideal, I think it's, I think having a city fund a TIF to do this is less ideal, because it would end up costing us more in the long run. So I will yield, but it has been going on for a number of years. I couldn't make it.
I agree that we have an obligation to get this problem fixed. I also agree that the assessment project towards the people that this road's going to be in the back of their homes is not an option. When I look at a million-two project, and $400,000 of it's oversized, so that leaves $800,000 for the balance of the base of the road, so the applicant's responsible for half of it, or $400,000, so then we're responsible for the other half, the other $400,000. And it's competitive CIP funds for each and every one of us in our wards. I really hate to see CIP be the sole source of funding for, to go look at this. What I'd like to see happen is the oversize, the $400,000 of the oversize, first explore the Utility Support Fund, and if there's no room for that, then to look at CIP for $400,000. Then I'd like to see a city-sponsored TIF for the other $400,000, because that's about, you know, if it's 25, 30 houses, that's about, I mean, it might pay it. And I think we do a combination of financing to try to get it resolved. A TIF is less painful for us, as it kind of leaves, well, it's not painless, but it avoids us from competing for CIP funds, and one of us is going to get one of our projects and our ward shoved down the road. So I'd like to see staff come up with a combination of funding for this, and I don't think it all has to come out of one source. I'll yield.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to possibly meet with the developers if necessary, to come back to council with a recommendation for financing of the improvement here with Elm Avenue, that excludes a TIF, and excludes assessing the property owners.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Back to Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the motion. I'd like to add a friendly amendment if I could. That would be to first see what money is in the Utility Support Fund, and use that first, and then go on down the line with the proposal that we have at hand.
I think it's understood that that would be covered in the motion.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure that that was, that's it.
Charity Doyle.
I'd just like a little refresher on utility support, so I have a question for Mr. Tech, if I may.
Yes.
Is that a revolving fund?
It is indeed a revolving fund, however, there have been projects utilized out of it that there will be no recapture from. I don't recommend that, because then we lose the revolving nature of the fund.
Thank you.
Okay, now that all of our speaker lights are off, I'll give you a little editorial from the chair, and then we'll go to a vote on the motion to direct staff to seek funding options excluding a TIF and excluding an assessed project.
Excessively.
Correct.
Jason, do you want to?
Correct. Okay. So we're here because of a deal that the city council made with a developer 11 years ago, which probably seemed logical, however, now it's caught up to us, and the reason that we're talking about it is because there's a landowner now that wants to develop their land. So obviously, they need a road. Well, they don't want to spend, they don't want to pay for their share of the road, plus the other developer's share of the road. The other developer received a waiver of right to protest, which has now been transferred on to 22 homeowners. So if we assess those, and that was the logic back then, it'll just be an assessed project. So for $11,000 per household, everyone in this neighborhood can get a new road that they don't need or didn't ask for. So that's a silly option. It is an option. We could do that starting tomorrow, but that's a silly option. I also don't support a TIF. I think that gives us the easy way out. That also would become a residential TIF, which would in fact require a small bump in everyone else's property taxes to give the schools their fair share. So that's going to be an unpopular avenue. So that money in 2005 was the responsibility of the developer. So the developer at that time sought the path of least resistance and found it, and so now we are here, 11 years later, deciding who to pay. Who should we, how should we pay for this? So in reality, this is a developer responsibility 11 years ago, and that system has been utilized to get out of that responsibility. So I think we need to, I think the motion on the floor is the right motion, to staff to seek funding options, and I don't think it would be outrageous to look at undesigned cash for something of this nature. However, just keep in mind, this is not the only one of these deals that was done in the history of Rapid City. We could be seeing one of these a month from now on. It's just not known at this point. So I hope, when this is said and done, I hope we learn something, and that we don't do this to some council 11 years from now. So the motion on the floor is to approve Alderman Laurenti's motion to have staff seek funding options, with a couple of exceptions.
Do you have a deadline?
Mr. Tech, how long would it take you and your staff to articulate all of the funding options?
I would request that it would be the first Public Works Committee in November.
Okay? Is that okay with the motion maker?
It is, Senator.
All right. All in favor of that motion, then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. One no from Mr. Estes. Motion passes.
Opposed, say no. One no from Mr. Estes. Motion passes. Now, back to Legal Finance Committee Items, number 44. We'll go back to John Roberts.
Direction to staff regarding master development agreement and all addendums there and to, including the contract for private development for TID 73 with President's Plaza LLC. And I'm not going to make a recommendation.
Okay, Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. I make a motion to approve the Legal and Finance recommendation, which is to terminate all agreements regarding the master development agreement.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to follow the Legal Finance recommendation, terminate the agreement. Let's go to Joel Landin first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to inform the council that I was delivered a letter from President's Plaza LLC's lawyer this afternoon. Did not have time to distribute that to you, but talked about it in more detail. But basically, they expressed some frustration with the fact that they did not feel they were formally notified, although I would note that the mayor had had conversations with both primary people prior to this item being on the agenda this evening. They also indicated in the letter basically that they're prepared to proceed with the separate. They expressed some frustration that we haven't pursued that. And I guess my response to that would be that the council had taken action directing staff to work with them on that option back in October, of last year. They were going to do a market analysis, and frankly, it really hasn't moved forward since then. So in my opinion, the ball's been in their court. But they did indicate that they are prepared to move forward with that. If you wish to explore that more, I would suggest you continue it. Otherwise, I think you're fine to move forward tonight. And if you do, the end result would be I would send them a letter notifying them that we were formally terminating the agreements.
Okay, we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to reiterate some of the comment that was made at Legal and Finance. Alderman Scott was also one of the ones that voted to terminate the agreements. But she brought up many of the things in the addendums and the amendments that we've made over the years. This development predates, I think, everybody on this council. So it's time for us to, I believe, move forward for the city, open this up. And I believe that we will see development here. And I'm hoping that my colleagues will support the termination of this developer agreement so that we can move forward on this property. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't vote for it, because I wanted this on the general agenda, not on consent calendar. I will support the motion before us this evening, but it's been a tough job. And here's my history of it. And I hope the next time around, we do a better job and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to also reluctantly support the motion. It's sad to see that we have to go through this process to get to what we need to get done. But as Alderman Wright suggested, is that perhaps the next time we can do a better job at it is putting this together and building a better partnership. And then this is an opportunity for me to express an opinion that I feel that we have an opportunity to take advantage of in the future, is that the last time I went to the National League of Cities, I got to learn a little bit more about P3s that has to do with public-private partnerships. And there's other resources out there that can assist us through a difficult challenge like this, and much better and better informed, just to raise the bar a whole lot as far as bringing in a better P3 process. So hopefully, that the city will take advantage of taking that opportunity to look at using a contractor out there that can put P3s together for us. Thank you, Mayor.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when I first heard about this idea, I was excited about it. When I saw the renderings and what could be and the possibilities, and even the idea of us adding the parking garage was all, I was in favor of all of that. And it's pretty disappointing how it struck out. I think there's something that has always needed to go on this lot, and for some reason, for years and years and years, it just doesn't happen. So I'm going to support the motion as well, with the hopes that a new opportunity will come, that we can get excited about and get behind, and hopefully learn the lessons that we've learned the last many years, and do it better the next time. So put that out there. I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Darla Drew.
Thank you. I'm going to support this as well. Yeah, like Jason and Solomon, I was excited. You know, I wasn't on the council, but I thought, geez, what a great opportunity for our downtown, for apartments and shops, and of course, the parking possibilities as well. I'd seen other similar developments in downtown areas in Colorado and thought, yeah, this is really the way to move forward. However, it isn't moving forward. And that's a very valuable piece of real estate right there that we have. And I think that we can turn it into some tax revenue for the city. So I'm reluctant to say it's, we're going to cut ties with the project as it is now, but we have to move forward. So thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a very long 11-year process, and my hope is that we're not going to be starting a new 11-year process. I hope whatever happens beyond this doesn't get as political as this has been over the last 11 years. We had some very good options that came to the table. We had some very good opportunities that came to the table. Unfortunately, we had a former mayor that I think sabotaged this a few times along the way for his own political gain. And I really hope that I see sometimes in the future, something come forward with the vision that was brought forward on this project. Because that is what we need in downtown Rapid City. We need something to revitalize Rapid even more and take it to the next level. So anyway, I hope there's somebody out there that's going to bring something forward, and I hope that politics don't get involved this time. So thank you very much.
Back to Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what Alderman Roberts has said, and what many of us have said up here, is that we are very open to something happening in that area. And so I just want to make that very clear to the public. You have a motivated council who wants to see development right in the heart of Rapid City. So bring it. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor is to approve the termination of the agreement of President's Plaza. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries with one no from John Roberts. Now, public hearing items, 45 through 48. Again, no speaker requests for those items. We'll go straight to item 44, or 45, I'm sorry, which is Resolution 2016-057B, a resolution levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property. Any motion for the council, from the council? Okay, good. We have a motion and a second for approval of item number 45. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Almost killed a resolution for lack of a motion. Maybe we need a break. Now onto non-consent public hearing items, items 46 through 48. Item number 46, second reading, ordinance 6136, and ordinance amending section 17 dot 06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Dirk Jablonski for Mike Cool, Pennington County, for rezoning from high-density residential district to public district for property generally described as being located at 308 Quincy Street. Recommendation is approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 47, Highway 16 Sewer, a request by Kent Haig for Alta Terra Development to consider an application to amend project plan for tax increment district number 70, Highway 16 South, for property generally described as being located Catherine Boulevard from Fifth Street to South Highway 16, and then south along 16 to Samus Trail, and east to the proposed Highland Crossing subdivision. Recommendation is to continue to the October 3rd city council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to continue this to October 3rd city council meeting. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 48, a request by KTM Design Solutions for Dwayne Penkratz for vacation of section line right-of-way for property generally described as being located north of Elgin Street and west of North Elk Vale Road. Recommendation is to approve with stipulations.
So moved.
Motion and a second for approval with stipulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, one to zero. Was there six people who voted aye on 48?
Aye.
Okay, and opposed? Okay, no one was opposed. Motion passes. Item number 49, bill list. We'll go to Finance Officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at $9,982,398.68.
Motion and a second to approve. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.